Then we will have a brief presentation from Laura to go over the project. And then if anyone wishes to offer verbal testimony during the hearing, let us know. We have a sign up sheet up here that we can pass back. And then also you have the opportunity to submit written testimony as well. And I'll mention more about that shortly. So for the official statement for the hearing, this hearing is being held to receive public comment on the proposed project by the Partridge Lake Property Owners Association, Department of Environmental Services for the application of aluminum compounds to Partridge Lake in Littleton, New Hampshire. The project requires the issuance of a state's surface water discharge permit by NHDES. Public notice for this hearing was published by DES on the website, on our website and in the local newspaper, the Caledonian Record. On February 6th, 2025, the hearing is being held on the date and time and location indicated in that notice. Anyone wishing to make oral comments on the proposed project for the department's consideration may do so during this hearing. Oral comments will be heard by those attending, will be heard by those in attendance. Those listening online can submit written comments. Written comments on the proposed project can be submitted to the department by the close of business at 4:00 PM on Wednesday, March 26th, 2025. All comments will be considered in making a decision on a final permit issuance and content. A written response to common questions will be prepared by NHDES and posted on its website within 14 days. Briefly, the proposed project was submitted by the Partridge Lake Property Owners Association to NHDES for considering consideration in the issuance of a state's surface water discharge permit as an administrative rule, ENV WQ 301, and authorized by RSA 485A13. The project proposes to apply sodium illuminate and aluminum sulfate to Partridge Lake for the purposes of reducing the frequency and severity of cyanobacteria blooms. The addition of these aluminum compounds will bind phosphorus in the lake sediments, thereby reducing the internal loading of nutrients that fuel cyanobacteria blooms. The hearing is being broadcast to interested parties. Got it. Okay. Sorry about that. This hearing is being broadcast to interested parties via the Microsoft Teams platform. It's also being recorded. Oral comments will be heard by those attending in person. Virtual attendees are encouraged to submit written comments to amy smagula@amy.p.smagula at des.nh.gov or by snail mail to 29 Hazen Drive, NHDES. Attention, Amy Smagula, Concord, New Hampshire, 03302. If you wish to offer oral comments, please add your name, town of residence, and contact information to the sign in sheet. This hearing is required by rule and is being overseen by NHDES. Your comments are important. The application or NHDS is not required to respond to any comments or questions, but will be responsible for clarification purposes. NHDS may respectfully request to respond to some oral comments in its official written comments to follow. At this point, I will turn things over to Laura Deemer with FB Environmental to provide an overview of the project. And then after that, we will have the opportunity to take any oral comments that there may be. All right. All right.
Thanks, Amy. Yeah, so good afternoon, everyone. And welcome to this public hearing. As Amy said, my name is Laura Deemer. I'm a certified lake manager and consultant lead on this project for FB Environmental Associates and supporting the Partridge Lake Property Owners Association. So I'm just going to be giving an overview, a presentation of the treatment plan, and then I'll assist DS with answering any questions and receiving comments at the end of the presentation. So the problem is that Partridge Lake has been facing recurrent and persistent cyanobacteria blooms for a number of years now. Cyanobacteria blooms at Partridge Lake have presented themselves as whole lake blooms and also surface scums that accumulate along shorelines, as you can see pictured up here, and what can sometimes look like spilled paint streaks or sometimes grass clippings in the water. And we recently discovered that Partridge Lake blooms nearly continuously year round, even in winter, which I will come back to towards the end when we're discussing treatment timing. But these blooms represent a serious potential health risk to humans and pets and wildlife. So why is this happening not only in Partridge Lake, but in many other lakes in New England? If we take a closer look, cyanobacteria are bacteria that can photosynthesize. And like plants, they need the basics like carbon dioxide and water and sunlight for energy. They also require essential nutrients and minerals for growth, with phosphorus usually being the most limiting nutrient for growth. And this is important to understand because many of our activities in and around lakes contribute to an excess of phosphorus in lakes than would what would otherwise be there naturally. So this excess phosphorus loading to lakes from usually watershed sources can include construction, development, agriculture. It can include fertilizers and logging, septic system, shoreline erosion, et cetera. The cyanobacteria can use this extra phosphorus to grow rapidly and form blooms, causing water quality degradation that not only impedes recreation, but poses those serious health concerns that I mentioned previously. So this watershed phosphorus loading settles to lake bottoms where it can be potentially released back into the water column under low oxygen conditions that typically happen later in summer, otherwise known as internal phosphorus loading. And when this internal phosphorus load becomes a significant source of phosphorus to the lake, it can have this positive feedback effect on those bloom forming processes that can further degrade water quality. So for Partridge Lake, it was estimated as part of the watershed restoration plan that was completed by CEI. That 55% of the total phosphorus load to the lake is coming from that internal phosphorus loading, and the rest, 45%, is coming from the other sources, namely the watershed. So the relative contribution of internal phosphorus loading can even become higher, especially when you're talking about summer when rainfall and runoff from the watershed generally becomes lower. And this is also coinciding at the most, usually the most critical time of year for cyanobacteria growth. This phosphorus builds up in the water column from internal phosphorus loading, and cyanobacteria are able to readily access that phosphorus. So long story short is that Partridge Lake is in trouble, and it's been in trouble for quite a while. And it's likely that these blooms will keep getting worse without an intervention like the alum treatment that we're proposing, especially when you're considering the compounding impact from climate change. So the in-lake management solution determined most appropriate for reducing the internal phosphorus load in Partridge Lake is what we call an alum treatment. This is a commonly used in-lake treatment option that typically reduces the internal phosphorus load by 80, sometimes up to 90%, and it can last usually 10 to 20 years or more. This photo is an example of a treatment in progress. There's a barge that dispenses the liquid aluminum compounds into the water, which you can see here by the lighter colored band of water. The aluminum settles rapidly, so this coloring is temporary and lasts an hour or a few hours at most. Just as a primer on how an alum treatment works, this is an illustration of a lake system again, showing your watershed phosphorus loads and your internal phosphorus loads to the lake. The applied alum flock rapidly settles on the lake bottom where it strips phosphorus from the water column and locks in and traps phosphorus so that it cannot be released from those bottom sediments and effectively removes that internal load. The watershed phosphorus load, though, continues to add new phosphorus to the lake over time and eventually will add to a new phosphorus-rich bottom layer of sediment that will form over that treatment. The rate of new phosphorus and sediment accumulation on the bottom depends on the amount the watershed sources are contributing, and thus will determine how long the alum treatment will last. So any changes in the watershed phosphorus load, such as reduction measures, fixes in the watershed, could help extend the effective lifespan of the alum treatment. And the PLPOA has already done some really great work in reducing that phosphorus load and is currently finishing up a DS administered 319 grant to address two identified problem sites. Okay, so now I'll go over the details of the treatment plan. So just move this over. The there we go. So obviously, this is a bathymetric map of Partridge Lake. The black outline you see is the treated area of your lake that we split out into three zones. So this represents area of the areas of the lake that are four meters and deeper. That's 64 acres or about 63% of the lake area. There we go. The total treatment dosage will be applying 50 grams per meter squared to Zone C and 25 grams per meter squared to both Zones A and B at a ratio of about 2 to 1 aluminum sulfate and sodium illuminate. There'll be the total application when it's all said and done will be about 16,000 gallons of alum and about 8,000 gallons of illuminate. So I also want to take some time to just mention the ecological and human health considerations. We are adding a chemical to the lake, and there are some considerations to make in the treatment design and application to minimize those risks. So aluminum can be toxic to aquatic life in high concentrations, especially at low pH. And this is most risky when the aluminum is first added to the water before it quickly hydrolyzes and forms that white fluffy flock. Once that flock is formed, though, which which only takes, you know, minutes to, you know, potentially up to a little bit longer, maybe an hour, it really is no longer toxic. However, the physical presence of flock can be stressful to fish, especially and combined with microscopic organisms as it settles. So we may see a reduction in plankton populations in the first year that will usually rebound in the next season or the season after that. The good news is, is that careful application of alum treatments can greatly minimize risk to aquatic life so that these minor short-term impacts to aquatic life following an alum treatment are considered this acceptable trade-off for what's happening right now, which is massive ecological disruptions to your lake and and serious health concerns caused by these recurrent cyanobacteria blooms. So one of the first things that we are concerned about is controlling pH, and we minimize that by doing that 2 to 1 alum to illuminate that I mentioned before. This is to stabilize pH between 6 and 8. The illuminate is what's acting as our buffer here, and it's buffering against changes in pH from the hydrolyzation of alum once it's injected into the water. The applicator, which will be Solitude Lake Management, and a third-party monitor will continuously monitor pH during the active treatment. And the applicator will adjust that 2 to 1 ratio slightly in real time to try to keep pH as close to background conditions as possible. If the pH drops consistently below 6 without recovery within about an hour, then the application ceases, and we discuss with the applicator on next steps. The second thing we consider is optimizing the conditions for treatment. So the time of treatment in spring is conducive to more even distribution and mixing of the alum. But we do have to wait for the waters to warm up slightly in springtime, at least to, you know, over four degrees, ideally up to 12 degrees Celsius. And that allows for faster flock formation to minimize that aluminum toxicity, you know, short-term risk I mentioned before. Usually treating in spring is when bloom risk is lowest, and so that will allow for the flock to settle as quickly as possible. Other particulates can also interfere with flock settling. So we'll be looking more generally at turbidity as well. I'll have, I'll be talking about treatment timing in a little bit since Partridge is a little unique in that at least the last two springs you've had blooms right after ice out. Also, treating in spring when waters are cooler and more oxygenated allows greater freedom of movement for the aquatic organisms to, while can move out of the treatment areas where it's more stressful for them. Wind and rain are generally not major concerns for caution, just safety concerns. They'll not operate in winds that are greater than 15 miles an hour or, you know, significant intense rain events. But there are things to consider, too, with the treatment itself. When you have high winds or or heavy rains, sashes can form, and we've seen this in previous treatments, where it'll redistribute the flock to areas that you're not necessarily targeting for treatment. So we'll be considering that as well. We also want to allow for refuge and rest for aquatic life. So this is why we split the treated area into three main treatment zones so that we're not treating more than 25% of the lake area on any given day. And so each of these zones represents about 18 to 22% of the total lake area. We are also applying low, relatively low doses, no more than 25 grams per meter squared per zone per day, and that's to achieve a mixed concentration of less than five milligrams per liter of aluminum, at least in the short term. So each zone will be treated by one or two passes over one or two days. And then within the treatment zone, every other strip in the zone is treated first before filling in the alternate strips to allow refuge for for those mobile organisms. And the barge can keep track of this various to navigate and track the treated areas. For this project, because there's only going to be four treatment days, we don't have here, but we do Zone C, since it has two passes. So we've set it up that Zone C will be treated. Day two will be Zone B. Day three will be Zone A. And then day four, we'll go back to the Zone C. Between its two days, we'll have a rest period between there. And then finally, we do intensive monitoring, and that'll be conducted by FBE and DS. There'll be 13 monitoring days total. We will be monitoring for a variety of parameters, including those listed here, which I won't read off. The important ones are assessing, for assessing treatment impacts to aquatic life are bolded up here, so that'd be pH, total aluminum, acid soluble aluminum, and then also visual observations of any distressed wildlife. The treatment, like I said, will be stopped and modified as appropriate if pH becomes too low at any point or if we see any unusual signs of distressed wildlife. Okay, so treatment timing. So treatment is most effective when particulates like suspended sediment and organic material, including cyanobacteria, are low in the water column. Otherwise, that impacts the flock settling down to the sediments where we want it to be. So like I mentioned, Partridge Lake, at least the last two springs that we have information for, has a history of blooming nearly year round, particularly after ice out in spring. And this makes treatment timing just a little tricky. So DS sampled under the ice last week and discovered that there is currently a bloom under, under the ice, and that will likely persist and emerge after ice out in the next month. So the photo you see here is a photo by DS after they they pulled a sample under the ice last week. When I, when we do look at the spring blooms in the past two years, there seems to be a die-off and possibly a clear water window in late May, early June, before the lake starts reblooming again. And so this is generally our target, but really, there's no guarantee on this. So, but certainly the cyanobacteria density will be considered prior to proceeding with the alum treatment, and we're discussing some contingencies before we move forward. So use restrictions during treatment. Alum will be applied in deep offshore areas, so there's little to no risk to shoreline resident now. DS is requesting that the public refrain from recreational use or any water withdrawal from the lake during and within 24 hours of the completed treatment. DS plans to close the public boat launch during the day while personnel are on site, so the four days that there's active treatment. Public notification letters to allshore for property owners around the lake will be sent out by PLPOA, so look out for that. Those notifications will also be posted at the public boat launch and possibly some other key areas of the watershed, like major road intersections leading to the lake or some access points around the lake. And PLPOA
Can you hear me, Sally?
Can, yeah. But I don't know. I've lost Laura. I don't see her in the list. Maybe she's dropped off. Looks like that's what happened.
Same here.
You have Amy's cellphone. Can you text her?
Yeah, I can do that. I'll try that.
Okay. I could also email Jack. I'm assuming he's in the room, but I don't know.
Yeah, it's strange, and I hope we're not over talking the presentation right now.
I know.
No, I don't think you are. I think a bunch of other, we were texting. I think people dropped off because we lost the presentation and audio.
Ah, okay. But I still see Amy's icon is attached here.
Yep.
And I'm, yeah.
I logged off and logged back in and then saw and heard you, you guys. But I, I'm looking at the names of people that are on, and I know a bunch of the lake people dropped off because we were texting and everybody was like, I don't know what's going on.
Yeah, I did. There were some gaps in the sound early on, but I figured that was, you know, just the Wi-Fi strength. But then it, we totally lost Laura. Feel like we're relegated to the kids' table at Thanksgiving, you know? I'll try texting Amy, I guess, unless you were texting with her, Todd.
No, I don't. I don't have her information.
Todd is Jack or someone in the room that you could text?
I don't have, I don't think I have contacts for anybody.
Okay. I can try emailing him. Maybe he gets an email on his phone. Let me try that.
Amy is, we will record that.
Bruce Hadlock. The Hadlock family has owned property in Partridge Lake since 1938. And I think we're probably one of the older ones in the lake as far as owning property or dealing with it. My first question is, this, you people have, I went down to Lyman, and I asked a question, and nobody from your department has ever gone down to Lyman, and they never were notified by any of you people pertaining to it. And Partridge Lake is owned by the town of Lyman. Why, why didn't you go down there and do something about it? Well, you haven't done it in a couple of years of it. And it's, I mean, I went down and I actually met with the selectmen down there on it, and they said there's been no effort or interference pertaining to it. And the actual water goes down through two or three other lakes that they have down through there. That's, that was number one. Okay? There was a young fellow back in roughly around 1960 or 61 for the name of Larry Collins. He went to Dartmouth College, and he did a complete study of Partridge Lake as well as Echo Lake and everything else on it. A lot of information could be obtained through him. That was number one. And he has passed away, but consequently, that information, I'm sure, is still at Dartmouth College. So I believe that that's a very important thing that you people should have been aware of on it. I'm not in favor of what you're doing, to be honest with you on this thing on it. I am, I do not believe in this. I have seen that. We have seen this in the last three or four years. We've seen some of this, but prior to that, we've never had any problems with this. And I just don't believe in what you're dealing with. I don't believe in the fact that when you're dumping it into the lake, when you're talking about doing it in the spring of the year, that's when our families are all out there using the water and everything like that. And you're going to be putting it in the lake, which I don't feel it's as comfortable, number one. Have you had any thing from the Fish and Game Department pertaining to it? Have you got any statements from them?
Of what we're doing. This is not the first aluminum treatment that's happened in New Hampshire, so there is precedent that's been set. So we always ask for a Natural Heritage Bureau review of projects that we're doing, which involves feedback from our agency, but also Fishing Game and the Natural Heritage Department, which controls rare or manages rare threatened and endangered species. So they have had opportunity to comment on the project, and at this point, we have not received any opposition.
Have you got any record, you got any records they have written back to you or that you've actually cut in contact with them? I'd like to see that. I, again, this is when most of the people in turn are using Partridge Lake. Our family is a large family, and they're always using it and putting it in there. Why don't you do it in the fall of the year? It may not be the best time, but why don't you do it when you have it in the fall of the year after people in turn are using the thing as far as the swimming, boating, and everything else on it? Just logical tells you to do it when it's at a different time. Nope.
Anybody else wish to testify?
All right. Heritage Bureau review, and then we'll compile that into a response. And then we'll compile that into a response to the public hearing and to the comment period that will follow, as Laura said, for the next 15 days, for written comments to come in. Once we address all of that and we determine that we could move forward, we will issue a permit for the treatment, and the treatment will proceed as planned after that process. Okay. So I just have a closing statement to read. And if there are no other comments, and I'm not seeing any hands. So seeing no one else who wishes to comment, this hearing is hereby closed. I remind you that written comments can be submitted honorable for 4:00 PM on March 26, 2025. And I thank you all for coming out today. Yes. So I will, I can make this recording available on the DES website. We have a YouTube link, and we have playlists. So I can make it available there. It's probably the easiest because the file size sharing it. I could do that, too, in a, in a way that I can get you the file if you want to keep it for record, but I can put it out on the state website. Yep. All right. Thank you again for all coming today.